All right, we will call the Health and Safety Committee to order at 6:00 PM. Members present are Dan Wireball, Mark McKeever, and myself. Chair Steve Young has previously notified me he would be absent this evening with cause. Our first item up is public participation. Mr. Stucker, do you have anything for us tonight? Thanks for being here anyway. Next up, we have the approval of the minutes from the December 8th, 2022 Regular Health and Safety Committee meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve.
I would, oh, second that.
Whichever way.
I'll second. I'll take the second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. McKeever and a second by Mr. Wireball. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. All right. The next item on our list is the tree ordinance. And in the packet that was presented to us back in December, back in the back on page 37, it's listed as Appendix D, as in dog. That is the Comprehensive Tree and Planting Plan, which is a proposed ordinance, Section 909.01 of the codified ordinance. I'm going to ask that the committee take the next two weeks to review that one last time, and then we will bring that up for discussion on the floor to see if there's anything else that needs change. The tree folks are going to do the same thing, just to make sure that there's nothing else that was missed in there that they want to bring to our attention, and then maybe we can get that established at the next meeting after this one. Is that all right for you, Mr. McKeever?
That's fine.
Mr. Wireball?
I'm good.
All right. Perfect. Any other open projects that anybody wants to discuss? I do know that the taxi cabs are on the list. Mrs. Vermillion, did you have anything you wanted to say about that this evening, or were you just inquiring if it was still on the list?
Just inquiring if it was still on the list and if any progress has been made.
Yeah, so I spoke with Mr. Gurnard about that a couple of weeks ago, and he said he still has it on his desk, and he thinks he knows which pile on his desk it's on, which tells me he hasn't done much more to it, but I will let him know that we're interested in rejuvenating that discussion, and we'll see. Can you, Susan, can you get that on the agenda for our next meeting as well with the tree ordinance?
Taxi cabs?
Yeah. Yeah. And that may have predated your time here, where it was on before, but as long as you just put that on here, we'll, we know where we're headed with that. Any other open projects either you two want to bring up?
No.
All right. One last chance, Mr. Stucker, public participation.
Yeah, I do have one.
All right.
Oh, wait a minute.
You made my night.
Bill Stucker, 205 North Spring Street. Just a question about the tree ordinance. Is this new tree ordinance going to totally replace the existing tree ordinance?
The way I understand it, it would be to replace the one that's currently in Section 909.
Okay. Hold on. Okay, thank you.
You want a copy of it for your perusal?
No, I can read it online.
Okay. All right. Seeing nobody else here to get in line behind Mr. Stucker, I will adjourn Health and Safety at 6:03 PM.
Okay, I'll call finance to order at 6:04. Members present are Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Terry Spiegel, and myself, Chair. Any public participation for finance? See any approval of the minutes from December 8th? A motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Kevin and Terry?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, let's start off with elected official salary reduction. Does anyone on the committee have anything to say about that? Nope, nope, nope. So, well, the law director's not here, but I do believe every, before every election, if we want to, I guess if we want to change, or we do, do you have something? Go ahead.
Someone told me today, I thought it was by the end of the year, but someone said it has to be by the primary.
Yeah, well, but before the filing deadline, so prior to February 1st.
Yeah, we have till February 1st as far, you know, what I remember in the past, you know, and my memory's not the greatest, but.
I would suggest you strongly look at, I mean, not, not just the workload that you have and all the artificial, but.
I'm sorry. But the inflationary, you know, that, you know, so, you know, auditor, I'll speak for, most financial auditors, whether they work for a company, if it's in the private sector, are making, you know, close to six figures, and that's one of the reasons we had trouble bringing candidates forth in this. So Joyce was an aborary, she was here a long time and never complained about it, and then the last time we brought up to, you know, get her up to a better level, but that, that's really a very, very important job. You're dealing with about roughly $20 million some years, you know, or more even, so I would consider, you know, the idea of cutting wages, you, the idea of, I mean, you guys are, have a lot of responsibility too, and I don't know what the OPRs yearly credit, what it is now, but, I mean, I think everybody on council at least deserves to have a one year credit.
I believe we're below that now, which.
I think you are below it now.
And that's fine, you know, where we're at now, there's no need to raise it.
But do you think you should at least raise it some to get?
Not currently.
There's two issues. There's two issues. One is the inflationary, and the other is you want to be able to attract people, you know. Right now, and you guys that have been on council before or have dealt with council, you know, the things that we've kind of gone through here in the last few years are unprecedented. So you're dealing with nationally, statewide, locally, a lot more agitation, you know, so, and, and the people that may have been good candidates or been willing to step up don't want to get, you know, into it. So you want to make sure that you have enough to give an incentive to serve, whether it's, you know, as auditor, or mayor, or council members. And I know we haven't had an abundance of people running for these offices, so just keep that in mind, that's my, that's my two cents.
My only response is now's not the time to look at raising it. I think back to when I was a member of the audience, and I was pissed off that the city was looking at doing, or the council was looking at raising them, when Mrs. Love suggested raising it to get in line with the OPRs, and that was at a time where we were laying off safety forces, and that's just, that's not who we are. I get, you know, if we have the money to bring it in line with the service credit thing, that's great, and we can talk about that down the road in another year, or two, or three, or four, when we've got the finances to do that, but yeah, today is not the time to do that.
It's never, it's never a good time, you know, and I understand, I understand where you come from, you know, we're making cuts and things. You ought to at least consider the auditor's position. You don't have to decide tonight, you know, but I would, I would say at least need to consider that position.
What did she make, what did she make this year?
About $55,000.
$55,000?
Yeah. It was 40, it went up each last two years, I think it went up five and five. You can consider stepping it, just to give you, like I say, you don't have to decide tonight, I think, I think that is a tremendous responsibility. Yeah, it's, you need a very good auditor.
Okay, now, not for my two cents worth, okay? I've been here, actually, I've been here longer than the mayor. I'm off and on. I started before you did. I've watched it, and I was always against giving a raise, but I also watched some of the talent, let me say talent, that we've attracted in the past, and first off, and I was thinking about it on the way in, because I knew this was on the agenda here, and I'm, I'm suggesting, and I'm sure it won't happen, but I'm suggesting a 10% increase for the auditor and the treasurer, but I don't think we need to do the treasurer yet.
We did the treasurer.
Yeah.
But that, that became an issue through my tenure on city council, the treasurer, which Jane Kremens did a great job, and Angela, I think, is doing a good job too, and we need to keep those type of people. And I also suggest 3% for each year for the council, and not because we don't have the money, but if you do the math, it's really not that much, you know, according, you know, being spread across, and it's not just, council's not paid just out of the general fund, we're spread acrossed. So it's, if you figure what we're losing in the general fund, it's really not that much to attract new people. Now, I'm not running for office as far as I know, so it's not going to affect me, but I don't want to sit out here like I did the previous two years and watch this circus up here that was going on for the two, not that, this is a little bit of a circus right now, but, but, you know, I don't want to see, if we just say, hey, let's have, you could be a council member, we're going to pay you 25 bucks a meeting, and just show up when you want, and that would be just a mess. So I don't, I don't agree with reducing, I would like to see it raised, but that's my opinion, so we'll talk about it.
Yeah. All your city elected officials' wage, I think, coming around about $250,000, which you're divided between general fund and all the other funds, so you're looking at, if you do a 3% raise, you know, you're, you're looking at $7,000, probably in the general fund, you're looking at maybe $3,000 to $4,000 a year, so, plus the auditor, so you'd be looking at, you know, $5,000 a year, so, and like, like you mentioned, the, a lot of decisions that had to be made this year caused, caused a lot of issues, but, and as you mentioned before, some of it's just a circus for the sake of being a circus, and, but this issue, you guys have served in a difficult time, and you should all be commended for that, and it's, it's not easy. It's really not easy what you did, and to make tough decisions, whether, and you know, you know as well as I do, we don't agree on everything, we never have, and, but we all have the best interests of the city at heart, and when you don't get people up here that have the best interests of the city at heart, you can see what happens. If they're just here to oppose a personality, it's, it goes south pretty quick.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, go right ahead.
I believe the auditor needs a raise, like 10% or whatever you said, Dan, I agree with that. As far as us council members, I, I come on council, I knew council got paid, but that, that is not why I became a council member. I can't, I became a council member because I thought it could help the community somehow, doing something like that. I mean, the money don't mean that much to me. I mean, I worked for the city for 45 years, so, in fact, I took a pay cut when I became a council for my retirement, so it's not the, not the reason, but I feel being on it now and doing what I've done for the last year, there's nothing wrong with raising it to that 3% for council members, because it's a lot of work. It takes more than what you think it does, and I'm not tooting my horn, but I'm not going to run again, so I'll, I would vote for something like a 3% raise for him, so, saying that right now.
The people that would benefit by it aren't running again, you know, so I mean, that should hopefully hold sway with the people that are watching, or the people that are running again, because, you know, we're not, I'm not going to be here, and you guys have already said you weren't, so, so.
Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't mention the mayor's salary, I didn't mention.
Out of respect for the people that are going to serve in the future.
Didn't mention the law director, you know, I don't think, you know, I don't know, I think they might be making what, enough, let me just put that one.
Well, if I can add one thing.
Yeah.
So I, I won't say the name of the councilman, but when, a councilman had told me this, but he sat here during the budget meetings and gave the mayor a fairly good raise, and he said, no offense, but maybe we'll get a better candidate next time. So I said, none taken, you know, but, you know, just, just for what that's worth.
And that, that goes along with what I've always said, and many people have heard me say this, and I've said it to some of the employers here in town, especially some of them out the north end of town, when they would complain how they couldn't get employees, they couldn't get employees, and all they could get was, you know, people with felonies and on drugs, and they wouldn't show up, and I said, you know what, get what you pay for, so, and this is, this is the same thing, so.
I agree.
I've always held that. Typically, the people who are complaining about their employees are saying that, but, you know, we all have an opinion, and we can talk about that again, but I wanted to give my opinion. So any more discussion on that? Oh, it's kind of.
Erin Sherrick, 1485 Oak Ridge Drive. I personally think that we need to have a freeze. If we don't lower it, we should freeze it, we are, we have council members up here who aren't getting anything out of this, somehow benefiting even though they wouldn't be getting paid the difference, so that doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but in the meantime, what we do have is we're requesting to take away a tax credit from people, we're, we're requesting to raise taxes. We do need that money, but there's not one person that's shown that they want, that they're willing to give anything from themselves. It's not that it all comes out of the general fund or gets split amongst funds, it's the fact that you're willing to give while you're asking.
I've given since 2010 up here. I've given, I've missed swim meets, I've missed softball, I've missed baseball, I've missed programs, I've missed all kinds of stuff, I, and I, and I take pride that I probably missed the less, less than anyone on, on council in my time, the time that I've been up here. I give a lot, you know, there's more than just money, and.
There's a lot more than just money, but we, we are, we're talking about money.
Okay.
We're talking about money. We're talking about other people's money. And I really, I really do not think that there should be the cost of living increases.
The committee will decide, and then council will decide, I guess, so, all right. Thank you for your, good enough. County waterline project is, I mean.
We're scratching that this evening.
We're scratching that this evening. Public library renewal levy.
I've got that information from the law director. If you would entertain, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion requesting legislation be prepared as an emergency for the Bussiris Public Library Tax Levy for a .5 mil renewal, because we are their taxing authority, we have to make that legislation request for them to be able to place it on the ballot.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no opposed. All right, that's good to go. Did you get all that, Susan? Okay. I didn't say who.
I got it.
Okay, you're good. Any open projects we want to discuss?
I'd have one thing I want to bring up, and it goes right in line with what the mayor mentioned, that we may not always all agree on things, but we're here for the, for the best interest, and I did ask the question the other evening when we were talking the budget, I turned around and asked the mayor, you know, we're talking about being tight this, this year, and the questions I asked were about the ARPA funds 271, and I asked, you know, where, where those earmarks were going, and one was for the splash pad, which is going to be, that money's going to be returned to us by Qantas at some point, we don't know if that's going to be this calendar year or not, and then the other one was for the, the path that gets out around the manhole covers that Jeff Dunn brought to us. Both are projects that I am absolutely in favor of, and we need, and Jeff Dunn made the comment, he says, you know, I've been waiting for this for 30 years. Because we're tight, I really, I want us to really talk about this and have a conversation and consider, maybe we pull those back out of the budget for right now until we know how we're going to be, and the mayor made the comment, he goes, I think we're going to be okay. I think, but we don't have that guarantee yet until we start to see, see what's coming in, so my, my, my thought that I just want to put out there for conversation is maybe we hold on to that money that can be used for, for the salaries, because the last thing I want to do is, is spend this money and then have to lay people off when we get into August, September, where he said we might start to get into danger.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I can answer that, yeah. I, well, if, the only, when I say I think we'll be okay is because the revenue we're planning this year, we'll know. It's like every year, when we start in January, we think we're going to, we'll see how the revenue is. And my opinion on the ARPA funds, you know, we've already used half of it already for safety forces. You've got to take some of that and use it for investing in the city.
I don't disagree with you at all, and I know the one, you know, instead of waiting for the Qantas to reimburse us, you know, maybe that's something we can hang on if it takes them an extra year.
The Qantas is going to.
But you didn't know if it was going to be this calendar year or not.
Oh, it's not, maybe not the whole thing, but they do have a substantial amount.
Right, so my thought is, instead of us budgeting to shell out our money for, I really would like to see us be, be conservative with that to make sure that, that we're going to be able to pay these guys. I, I get, and I mean no argument with you, you know, I think that, I agree with you on the quality of life things, I agree with the things that we, I would love to do if we could do it, but when we're, when we're worried about making sure that we're going to be able to make payroll throughout the rest of the year, if we have flatter than anticipated revenues, I just think that that's, that's the fiscally responsible thing to do, and I, I think both programs, like I said, are great, and, but, you know, when Mr. Dunn made the comment, I've lived without this 30 years, well, we can live without it one more. We've, we've lived without other things and pushed them off for a year, so.
Yeah, what we could do is just kind of hang out on that one, rather than taking out of the budget, let's just agree to hold off on it until we see halfway through the year how we're doing, if, if you guys all agree with that, so, and then, then go from there, you know, just agree not to do it until we.
I think on everything in line 271, I'd like to, to put an absolute hold on that with.
We already started on the splash pad.
We did the engineering and then stuff.
They've already done the underground on it.
Underground, okay.
Underground's ready to go, it's going to go out to bid, so, and you're looking at having.
And if we don't do the splash pad, then we're not going to open the pool.
Well, you beat me to that, because that was the rest of my argument. I'd rather, I'd rather open the pool than, you know, as well as being able to pay.
Can't have both of them, I don't think.
Well, it's, it's, the splash pad is, is going to be something free, so if, when Qantas has all the money, it's not going to cost anything, it's going to be free to the residents to use.
So when that money, and, and this is where you and Joyce are the best versed in this, when, when that money is reimbursed, where does it go?
It'll go back in the ARPA funds.
And then we would utilize it?
Yeah.
So, okay, so whatever money the Qantas does put forth this year.
It'll go back in.
Can then be re-appropriated into, into the public safety salaries?
Yeah.
And then what about the, the path for those manhole covers? Again, I, I understand.
That's something we've already, we've already committed to.
We, we committed to it, but we haven't, we haven't voted to move the money to pay for it yet.
I understand. I think we did.
We did not vote that money to go out there.
We, we had a.
The legislation, it had to be pulled back out of that legislation for the legislation to be voted on.
Yeah, so we've committed to it with the, with the county.
The Park District.
Yeah, yeah, in the county.
And I understand that, Mayor, I do, but, you know, just because we've committed doesn't mean we can't for good, just cause, I'm committed.
I understand, but again, it's, you know, like I say, I think let's, let's agree to hold off on it, see how the revenue comes in, you will know for the, how the year's going by, you know, April, May, you know, we'll know we're up again, so we'll have a very good idea, and then we'll get, why don't we bring it for discussion then? I think total investment splash pad is going to be zero.
At the end, yes, but.
But they should, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
If, if we pull that money out there, that helps balance out our salary line, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
And, and I, like I said, once again, that, of that 1.2 million we've got, it's not going to, once it goes to salaries, it goes poof. So we need to put, use that money, which is a gift, a one-time gift, we've already bought an ambulance with it, we already bought some police cars, we've already used it some on our salary lines, and now we need to make this, some improvements in the community with that, and I think that's so important.
I'd agree with you any other time other than when we can't afford to pay our employees, so.
Yeah, well.
And I, I'm just, I got one vote up here, but that's where I'd like to do.
So you're speculating that we can't, and so we don't know that right now.
Right.
According to budget, we can, already, even with that in there, so, and that's, that's a budget you guys have already.
Conservatively cautious is the word I'd like to be. I've spoken my piece.
Gotcha.
Anything else for finance? Any public participation? All right. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I hate to, I agree, we, if we can hold to at least April or May to see where the money's at, I think that's a great idea, so that we can, just to be cautious, because we don't know if this levy's going to pass, and, you know, I hate to, I hate to hold up on anything, but if we can wait to April or May to look at our budget and see where the money's at, I think we really do need to be conservative.
Like we just talked about.
Yeah, right, just. Well, we're, we're going to be conservative.
Right, right.
We're going to watch it very, yeah, we're going to watch it very closely.
We're all trying everything. I'm just saying, with the ARPA money, it, you know, if, if we're good by then, and it look, you know, the revenue has increased or making it we're going to be able to get through, then, yeah, I don't see a problem with it.
Okay, well, we'll watch it very closely, sure, as you, you guys will too, I'm sure.
That's why we make the big bucks. All right.
I do, I have one more question, and I think it's okay, because it would be budget-related to discuss it with this, and just two, two questions. Years ago, we had a partnership with the YMCA, where they came in and ran the pool. Would you, would you consider approaching them?
Well, we, we haven't given up, we're looking at ways we possibly can raise some money for.
I understand that, but would you consider at least approaching them and asking them if they have any interest in doing that again? It's a win-win for us and for them, if it's done right.
We will, we will do that. The other thing is, the cost of chemicals are the major cost.
So.
They were about $40,000 last year.
I understand that, and.
And they've gone up dramatically.
There, there are ways that they may cover part of that too, when I managed the Crestline Pool back in 1990 and 91 as an employee of the aquatic director of the Shelby YMCA, and so we had a similar agreement. I, we paid for everything. Basically, we were given use of the facility, we took care of everything, whatever income came in, we kept, whatever expenses came in, we were, we were responsible for, so I just think.
We have to, we have to make it, because we'll have to hire, if we're going to act, find a fund somewhere, whether it's in the public or the private sector, we have to, you know, know probably within a couple of months, because we have to hire lifeguards and, and everything, so we got to compete for them, so we're going to work on it. I'm just saying, it's a priority of mine to, to work on that, so.
Okay. And I'll withdraw my other questions for now.
Okay, okay.
We all good? I'll adjourn at 6:27.
6:29 PM, and I'm going to call the Public Lands and Buildings Committee to order. Members present are Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, and myself, Chair. Brooke Potter was not able to make it tonight, and we do have a lot of fans.
For good reason. So, first off, do we have any public participation? Okay. Next, the minutes from the December 8th meeting, I would.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a first from Mr. Myers, a second from Mr. Wireball, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, those minutes are passed. Next on here is the office space in City Hall. I guess Civil Service is looking to want more space and have our stuff out of their space?
No.
But she doesn't want to move?
This is not about that, I don't believe.
That was one thing that was brought to my attention.
This is about Congressman Latta using the space that we had originally set aside there for Congressman Jordan, so he was no longer our congressman.
Okay.
And we just, yeah.
But it was brought up that Civil Service needs more space.
Yeah, I didn't, I haven't heard that, yeah.
I, I had. It's, it's kind of a fight between our files and their office, which.
Okay, I don't know.
There's not really a good way to move our files unless, you know.
I have a little information on that. We had initially talked possibly about utilizing the space back here, but then we had the, the other use of this room came up, and that kind of nullified that, that potential move.
Well, I, I would think if Civil Service would, should approach the administration, since they're in charge of the building.
How much space do they need?
Well, we've got filing cabinets and our permanent files located in there, and the thought that we had when we discussed this over a year ago was, one of the, one of the possibilities we had was putting those files in here, I don't know if the lactation room could be moved over into the.
That's got room for files now in there, you know.
It would pretty much, I think you'd have to turn that into a storage room, it would, you really would lose it, because we don't use it as a caucus room anymore.
The room downstairs is not conducive to file, it's so small, it's, you know, I
The room downstairs is not conducive to file. It's so small. It's, you know, I, I don't know. This is the first I've heard it with files, so.
No, I didn't suggest we put them downstairs. No, I, in the caucus room.
We, I can, yeah, I can, uh, I can meet with Sharon.
Yeah.
They've got a meeting. Oh, they had a meeting last night. I'll meet with Sharon and ask them what, what kind of space they need and then get back with you.
Okay, he's gonna meet with her.
That would be good.
And then, your question is what?
Yeah, so Congressman Latta's interested. He's, uh, our new congressman, and I, I know was very successful with Congressman Jordan's representatives, Dee Dee, and, uh, she was here two days a week. And had a, you know, a nice group of people came in with problems that they were having with, you know, social security or the federal government or, or, or one of the agencies, and, uh, and that's a great, it's great to have an interface like that here. And, and, uh.
I think that's a service that we're able to offer to our residents that where they, you know, if we say no to that, then they're gonna go looking in, in somewhere else, you know? Gaiyan, Upper, wherever, and then, and then people are gonna have to drive that much further to, to do something, so. I, I don't have an issue with that at all.
Are we offering that space to anybody else?
Uh, nobody else is asked for.
We have senators and all sorts of people who cover this area. Are we offering all of them to the use of that space? So we'd have to divvy out what days of the week different groups would be here, or, I mean, I'm not hearing any other names, just like we didn't hear any other names before.
I mean, they're not gonna be here every day. I'm sure I would guess maybe two days a week. I mean, we could, we could offer that. The only ones that had showed interest in the past were Congressman Jordan as well as, uh, as Congressman Latta. Senator Portman and Senator Brown never had any, you know, interest in it, so never approached.
Do we offer it?
No, they, but they never asked either, yeah.
If you don't know that something's an option, I mean, a lot of people.
Well, that's a national, they've got their, they've got their offices.
Would you look at me and say, "I need you to do this, but can I do it on your space?"
Okay, what are you, what are you asking me?
Uh, so in other words, we should probably offer.
So, so the national.
Should we find out if anybody else wants to use the space, so we know how it's going to be used?
So, so hang on. A, a, a senator represents the entire state. And they have offices in Columbus. They maybe have offices in big cities in Cleveland. They're not gonna be, I'll offer. They're not gonna be interested in, in a office here. They've got offices throughout the state, the larger cities. A congressman who represents this district likes to have offices in different parts to represent, get, uh, closer to the people. So I'm happy to offer it to our Senator Vance as well as Senator Brown. I'm happy. If that's what you're asking me to do, I'm happy to do that.
Well, just anybody who's covering our area. I mean, if, if we're gonna offer it to one, we should offer it to all of them. So if one wants it, we should ask the others. Say, "Hey, we've got this space." You know?
I'll write him.
We can set up a calendar as to when people can come. Let us know if you, if you would be interested in using that space when you're around.
I'll be happy to write him a letter.
I think, Madam Chair, what I think he's saying, though, is we only have one congressman that doesn't have statewide offices.
Right.
So.
Okay, so are you gonna allow Congressman Latta to have this, is what I'm asking tonight?
Well, well, how many more other offices do we have free in this building?
Just that one.
Okay, so, and right now, we just talked about another space that may be too small for what it's used for.
So you think, you think we should store files in there versus having a congressman rep, to have the citizens of this country to be able to interface with it, with the federal government versus sitting files in there, locking the door?
Do we have people in this building that need office space?
Not that I know of, you know?
I'd like to make a motion to allow the administration to extend the, uh, invitation to Congressman Latta for use of the space that Congressman Jordan previously utilized.
I would really like to know whether or not the girl that does the, the testing may end up needing another office if there's not enough space for her before we.
Point of order, I have a motion on the floor?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. I'll contact Congressman. He'll be very pleased.
Thank you.
And we'll citizens go see him. And I will promise I'll write that letter to Senator Brown as well as.
You will. Okay, do we have any other open projects that we need to speak on? Okay, any public participation? I will, uh, end Public Lands at six thirty-seven PM.
Okay, we'll call Plating to order at six thirty-eight PM. Members present Kevin Myers, Dan Wirebaugh, Terry Spiegel, and myself, Chair. Any public participation? Okay, we need approval of the minute for December eighth. Plating?
I'll move to approve as presented.
I'll say.
All right, I have a first from Kevin, a second from Terry. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimous. Okay, we have open projects, and we have a gentleman in the audience who would like to, uh, talk about our container, uh, shipping container ordinance that we may have to.
Yeah. Mr., Mr. Wirebaugh, put it into committee, and, uh, we have had some issues with those. Currently, right now, we treat them as an accessory structure in residential districts where, um, much like a shed or a garage, they have to meet the setback requirements and the area requirements of residential lots. But, uh, you know, we've had a couple of people that have just placed them on their lots without any permits or anything, and those have caused problems, and so, um, now we're looking into what other communities are doing to regulate those. And on my initial search today, what I found was, uh, I went to the city of Hamilton, that's down around Cincinnati area. Uh, great community. They have, uh, wonderful legislation. Uh, they're really doing, doing things really well down there. And they, they, they will permit shipping containers, but only on a temporary basis. Um, and theirs is only for thirty days. And then after the thirty days, uh, you gotta get them pulled out. And they have, they have to meet the setback requirements of the district that they're in. And then also, um, if you have a building project and that shipping container is part of the, the development project that you're working on, it's allowed to be there during the duration of the project, so you can get more than thirty days out of it. But their requirement is, it has to be removed within fifteen days after the project has, uh, been finalized.
Is that more geared towards, like, those ones where they'll bring the container, put it in your driveway? You put your junk in it, and then they come take it away to a warehouse, though? Is, is that?
No, that is, that is their, that is the, in their zoning code for shipping and storage containers.
Yeah, I understand, but who in their right mind is gonna put a shed on their lot for fifteen or thirty days? I mean, that, that's.
But that's, that's, that's how we define it. We define it as a shed. They define it purely as a shipping container and deal with it in terms of just.
So is it your desire that we disallow a shipping container to be used as a shed here?
I don't know. I think, I think for our community, it, it may serve a, a good purpose, and we've had several people that have, um, placed them on their properties, and, and it works out fine.
And they're affordable, for one.
Well, and, and if you would let me finish, please. Um, I do also have, uh, Perrysburg. Perrysburg, uh, you know, they're, they're a much more affluent community than what we are, but, uh, they only allow them for fifteen days. They're more strict than what Hamilton was on, on those. Then, and another community, I forget which one it was, uh, they, they allow them on a conditional basis. So in their community, Planning Commission approves their conditional, uh, use permits. And so, but they, they do have a way of allowing them on the property. So instead of just being allowed to go through the permit process where I would approve it as your zoning administrator, theirs is a conditional use permit, so it has to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The board looks at it, and they look at the condition, uh, where it's gonna be placed, how it's gonna be used, and then they would approve or deny their request for a conditional use. So maybe that may be the approach that we would, uh, look at going is, uh, creating it as a, uh, a conditional use within our zoning code. I'm done.
Would that require a legislation change to our code to allow that?
Yeah, yeah, it would have to go to a, a public area.
And, and.
Because of the zoning change?
Yeah, 'cause it, 'cause you're changing the wording of the zoning code, the actual legislation.
Would you anticipate it being the same throughout all of our zoning areas? Or would you consider it to be different from one zoning classification to the next?
I mean, I think it would be different because, I mean, what do you do with Walmart? You know, they have all those shipping containers in their parking lot. You know, that, and that's essential to the function of their business for, you know, the different holidays that they, they, uh, provide merchandise for, so.
John, would you grandfather the ones in that are already in?
Oh, yeah, 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 you wouldn't retroactive apply that law to the ones that are already in place.
Where is there one that's not, that's too close?
That's too close? Um, there was one on Southern Avenue.
Okay.
But I recently have been informed that they have moved that to the backyard.
That was actually feet away from the property line. It's been gotten moved, but then they did move it further. You can't see it from the street anymore.
I don't think so.
I don't know where exactly. It's on the property, but it has been moved, and it.
Good enough.
Yes, Coach. You and Mr. Sticker are both on the BZA.
Yes, sir.
What are your thoughts on that? Is that something that you feel is a good fit for the BZA?
I think it can be.
I like, I like the thought of it.
Because, you know, we look at it, we try to look at, and, and like we do with all the other items that come to the BZA, we tell the applicants that, you know, if you can get us a letter from all your adjoining neighbors that they are in agreement with whatever structure or alteration you're wanting, we usually don't have any argument about it. We aren't discussing. We see if it's compatible and, and, you know.
Does that carry on if, if, if Mr. Spiegel's given that permission and he sells his house to Mr. Wirebaugh? Is Mr. Wirebaugh afforded the same, you know?
Yeah, it goes with the property.
It, it, yeah, once it's down. It stays with the property.
Would it be fair for us as a committee to ask Mr. Ross to present language change to the ordinance that he sees fit?
Why not?
Is that, is that fair to ask?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I honestly, I think a, a conditional use is the best use for, uh, the best approach to have for this.
Aaron?
Are we also going to include, like, upkeep rules? So, I mean, is there, because somebody was complaining about it being ugly on one of the ones that was put in town. That was their big complaint, I mean.
Well, in, in that.
So are we gonna look at, like, R one is, you know, if you're gonna have something like this, it has to be like this versus R three, or, you know?
Those are all things that would be, uh, dealt with during the conditional use hearing. And so the Board of Zoning Appeals would, uh, set those conditions for them.
So we wouldn't just have a basic, so I could get one and be conditioned into, but it has to be this, but my next-door neighbor, theirs would be completely different condition?
Yeah, you'd, in zoning, there is no case precedence.
To her question, if I may, then, would that fall under property maintenance if it, you know?
Correct.
If she puts one up today and it looks great, but twenty-seven years from now, she hasn't done anything to it, it's, it's faded and.
It's a rusted bucket.
There's a big rust hole on the side.
So would that, would that be, in what you're suggesting, would that ability be with our, our property maintenance to have any teeth to actually do anything about it, or would it be a moot point?
Certainly.
You know, where, where the courts are gonna say, "Man, we don't care."
It would, it would definitely fall under the, uh, purview of the property maintenance, uh, officer. But however, don't forget that peeling paint was an issue for this community when it first started. And people were offended that they were written up for having peeling paint, and so now that is not something that's readily enforced.
Right.
So that could be an issue also. But, but, you know, that, that can happen with anything. That can happen with a shed that you put on your property now. So just 'cause this is a, a shipping container that's used as a shed, how is that different?
I'm just asking because the big fight lately has been residential ones shouldn't have certain things in theirs, or they should have.
What do you mean?
paved driveways. It's been brought up as a complaint multiple times about buildings that weren't large enough or that too many different property, buildings on the property.
In R one? What is, what is that?
We've had a specific person or two that have had some problems with some other things. So before it becomes an issue, should we have this addressed as part of it? That's my question.
But I, but again, I don't see how you can just limit it to just a shipping container when, when it can be the same thing for a shed.
Well, then that's a question.
You know, I mean, those are.
It works for changing language.
But those are still handled through our property maintenance code.
John, what would happen if somebody had a shed up, put one of those storage containers out, and you found out that they were living in it? What then?
Well, then it would be considered an accessory dwelling unit. And currently in the city of Bucyrus, our zoning code makes no provision for accessory dwelling units on properties. Those are, uh, residential units, you know, you've, you can only have one residence per lot. So therefore, they would be in violation.
Okay. I'm sure, I'm sure some people would.
Oh, sure, sure. And, and it, I've had, this year I've had more people.
It's beautiful dark.
This year I've had more people ask me about accessory dwelling units than ever before. You know, so, so that kind of shows you, we need more housing in the city of Bucyrus that's affordable. And, um, you know, as we move on and we don't have either apartments or, or smaller affordable homes, you know, more people are gonna be looking at possibly adding, uh, an accessory dwelling unit. So that may be something that council may wanna look at also and see if that's something that would be benefit to our community if it's done right.
Yep.
Could, uh, could you draw up a?
Yeah, I'll draft some language that I think would be appropriate for that, uh, for the, uh, shipping containers.
Yeah, and that would include other accessory structures?
Well, right now, the shipping.
Or we just need to.
Yeah, the shipping container's the only one that's the issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I understand Aaron's thought about, you know, the appearance of it because, you know, when you. The one that is behind my house at my neighbor on Spring Street, it painted white. It matches the house. It's well-kept. It's placed nicely. It's, and, you know, and they use it 'cause they don't have a garage. But, you know, the one that we were talking earlier was an eyesore where it was sitting, and especially in that neighborhood, you'd think it would be a little bit nicer looking or cleaner. But we did approve, I was not at the meeting, but the BZA did approve a container on a property at the north end of town. Um, and they're going to maintain it as a, as what, they would care for their house. So. Anybody else got any?
Just one more thing.
Sure.
While you're preparing that, just if you hadn't already thought about it, one of the things that would be important to me to see in there is, uh, the need that they have to remove any placarding or any other mention of any chemicals or anything that were stored and/or shipped in them. Um, because, you know, your fire department shows up there for a call and they see, you know, a placard that was just left on it 'cause, "Oh, we thought that looked kind of fun or neat." You know, if it says that there's something in there, they need to know truly what, what is in there, so I would ask that you consider that.
That's a good idea. I'll, I'll definitely, uh, try to make it as comprehensive as I can. That way it's, it's well-regulated and, you know, we, we don't, our zoning code doesn't regulate aesthetics of, of buildings and structures. We don't tell you what color paint to put on there and such. But, yeah, I'll look and see if there's language that we can add to, to try to help that out.
Okay. Does anybody have, uh, have anything? Yes, go ahead. Uh, yeah, I, I, and I, I don't know if maybe we're doing this, but I think it should be a specific section, you know, Part C, shipping containers. And I think it should be very shipping, and you can say shipping containers will be dealt like an accessory structure, but, you know, they can't have the placards. Do they need to be tested for? I was, I did a little bit of research. Some of these have to get checked for, apparently they have wood floors in them, and they put this bug killer or something.
Yeah, yeah. When I spoke to Richland County about getting one, uh, in a commercial area, they, that was one of the things that they actually do when they check them for that. So if you're gonna put any type of electric or anything in them, I, I was told that I had to go through them.
So I, I think, you know, within that, it should be, uh, there should be a specific section just for shipping containers so that, which would make your job easier when someone comes in and says, "What about shipping container?" And you can say, "This section right here gives you all the details." You know what I'm saying? Rather than just saying, "We'll, we'll deal with it like a shed," you know, like a accessory structure. So just my comments on that, and you, I'm sure you'll do a good job.
I would, I would give you my best.
Thank you, John. Bring your BGA. Does anybody have anything else? Does anybody have anything else? Any public participation? All right, I will adjourn at, uh, plating committee at 6:53.
Due to a lack of quorum, the Economic Development Committee and the Service Committee will not be having meetings tonight.